I want to welcome the public to the February 21st, 2023 closed session meeting. I call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough to advise the public on how to participate?
Thank you, Mayor. The public can access live meetings at fullerton.legisstar.com or on our government cable television channels. They may address City Council in person or virtually by joining the Zoom meeting online or by telephone. To address Council in person, you can register to speak in the City Manager's Office, which is next door to Council chambers. If you have materials to distribute to Council, please provide seven copies to the staff when you register to speak, and staff will call your name when it is your turn to speak. Those who are joining via Zoom should go to zoom.us/join or call 1-669-900-9128. Enter Zoom meeting ID 97842191797, and all that information and more is available on the agenda.
Thank you for that. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Charles.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
All right. We will now hear public comments on closed session items. Seeing none in chambers, we'll go to Zoom.
We do have one hand raised in Zoom.
Please.
Jane Riefer, you should be able to speak.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on item number four, which is the 1747 West Commonwealth. And I don't know how much information that you have on this, because there's no staff report available to the public, of course, so I can't see. But my understanding is that this is a small sliver of property that the city owns and that the property owners at the historic landmark, which is the original Norton Simon headquarters for Hunt Food Industries, that they're wanting to purchase it. I'm pretty sure that on the property that they've already purchased from the city, that they just took out most of the trees. And so I would hate to see that happen again. South Fullerton, and particularly this area, in the, right underneath the railroad passageway, is concrete, concrete, concrete everywhere. It's got a hard urban edge, and we do need trees and landscaping to soften that. The minute you go to the west of this area, it's all commercial, lots of concrete, lots of asphalt, almost no greenery anywhere. So I'd hate to lose these historic coastlive oak trees, which are native trees. I'd hate to lose the pecan tree, which provides food for wildlife and people. I'd hate to lose the historic eucalyptus and pine trees. And so if any provision can be made for keeping them, and if it needs to be saved as open space and the city retains that, well then so be it. I would just hate to see this disappear. And I'm not quite sure what the process is. I hear at one point that this may come, that if you approve the sale, that it'll eventually come before the public. But I'd like to know if we can just not even go that far. I will say, too, that all these trees were planted at the same time as all the National Register designated trees that are just south at the Hunt Center and Hunt Library. So they're from the same era, they're just as grand, we need them even more in this area that's kind of, like I said, a hard urban edge. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other? Very well. We will now recess to closed session. Good afternoon, folks. Regular City Council meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you kindly advise the public on how they can participate this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. The public can access this meeting at fullerton.legisstar.com or on our government cable channels. They may, the public may address City Council in person or virtually by joining the Zoom meeting. To address City Council in person, please register to speak next door at the City Manager's Office. If you have materials to distribute to City Council, you can also provide those copies to the staff when you register to speak. Staff will call your name when it is time for you to address City Council. If you are joining the meeting on Zoom, you can go to zoom.us/join, or you can call 1-669-900-9128. The Zoom meeting ID is 97842191797, and all that information is also on the agenda.
Madam City Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Charles.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And for the invocation this evening, I'm going to welcome Pastor Teddy Omundi of Friends Church in Fullerton to give our invocation. Pastor Omundi, am I saying that correctly, sir? If I'm not, please advise. Good evening, sir.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Pastor Teddy Omundi. I'm the pastor at Friends Church Fullerton. Actually, the church is about three years old here in the city. I'm also a resident in the city, so I've been in this city for about 20 years or so. And so grateful to really, just to say this evening, thank you for your partnership as a council member, and I know that your desire is to do what is best for our city. And so, and I really appreciate just the partnership that has been. The city and the churches here are very involved with the fellow pastors in different organizations, and just being able to see just the partnership between the City Council and the community, the worshiping community here in the city. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, so I just wanted to say thank you. Because in our church, we have this phrase that we say, "We are better together." And definitely, it's one of those things that we know that we all have different giftings that we've been given by our Creator, and if we're able to bring those together, we definitely, as we contribute those to the city, we'll definitely be able to make this place a better place to live in. So thank you all for your time, and thank you for your contribution to our great city here of Fullerton. So would you bow down for a word of prayer? God, we are grateful for this evening. Thank you for your goodness. Thank you for your love and your grace. And for these wonderful people that have given their time to be able to lead us in this city. God, we continue to ask of your wisdom, of insight, of collaboration, of peace and guidance, God, in all aspects. We know that leadership is difficult, especially when there's so many moving parts and decisions that needs to be made in different ways that affect the lives of, daily lives of people. So we're grateful that they are in this position to make the decision that needs to be made, so we ask that, God, in their collaboration and seeking counsel from one another, and also from you, that God will be able to serve this city, to bring glory to your name and to, for the welfare of this city as well, to be in a good place. So we are grateful for this time, we are grateful for the agenda for this evening, and we're grateful for all the contributions that will be given tonight. And we ask that all those will be done in honor, in humility, because we know we are all better together. And we pray this in your name. Amen. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If I can call on the Mayor Protem to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
Hand over your heart, and please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on our city attorney to announce if there are any things to report from closed session.
No report this evening.
Very well. I'll ask our fellow council members if they have any ex parte communications to report. I'll look to my left. Seeing none, I'll look to my right.
I had a conversation with Sedan Lancaster from the Firefighters Association.
And I had a conversation with the Firefighters Association myself. We do have one proclamation this evening. I do want to call on Councilmember Ahmad Zara and Councilmember Dr. Shayna Charles to present this. It's in honor of Black History Month, and if they are welcome to go to the floor and present this proclamation accordingly. And I thank them both for doing that.
Sure. Do you want to read it?
You can take our time here. Can you stand in front of the mics so we can get you on the air? The one over there, the standalone is open.
Why don't you do it?
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, it's an honor to have the Owens Foundation, Leon Owens Foundation here to receive this proclamation. I've worked with you, I've seen your work in our community for many, many, many years, and I want to also say that I want to, I hope this is in honor of the memory of Shirley McClanahan, who left us recently and is a dear friend and a wonderful community member. So.
Okay, I will read this. So we have two proclamations here, one from Assemblymember Shara Corksylvas and one from our City of Fullerton City Council. And they are proclaiming Black History Month, February 2023. Whereas February is Black History Month, celebrating the achievements and influence on Black Americans in our city, state, and nation, be it resolved that Fred Jung, Mayor of the City of Fullerton, on behalf of the entire Fullerton City Council, do proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in the City of Fullerton. And we're having everybody come up to receive it, yes? So if you would all please come up, and we'll be happy to present this to you. (APPLAUSE).
Do you want to say two words? Or?
Which one do I go?
Either mic works.
Should we be consistent?
Depends on which way you want to face.
We need to face that way, though. Also for the Zoom. Oh, absolutely. And thank you for being here, Representative of Shara Corksylvas.
The Leon Owens Foundation would like to thank all of you for thinking of us during Black History Month. We are thrilled to be partners and working with the community. So thank you again for considering us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Candy Bear, absolutely. I'm asking her to come in front, but she didn't want to.
Thank you. One more? One more for me, too? We've only got two here. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The audience are fast, they're coming up to present it. Thank you.
All right, we are now on to public comments.
Madam City Clerk, who's registered for comments this evening?
I have four speakers registered in chambers. I'll also remind the speakers that this is also time to make any comments on consent calendar items. And our first speaker is Todd Harrison. After that will be Yolanda Harrison.
Very well. Mr. Harrison, good evening, sir.
My name is Todd Harrison, and I'm one of the endangered residents of the Rancho La Paz mobile home park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor, council members, and all City Staff Department. Tonight I speak to this council and the police chief. I've happily seen Fullerton sole motorcycle officer on the job for a few times. I have, in fact, something between a request and a beg for the motor officer's deployment the corner of Valencia and Lemon. I know that the deployment of officers is, for the most part, data-driven, and the number of actual accidents at that corner has been low-ish of late. The hole in that data is that near misses don't count. Currently, the account of attempted vehicular manslaughter against my dear wife in the last year is at four, and I expect the number to go up. It is only by very careful defensive driving, or rather scooting, that she has not ended up under some bad driver's wheels. It's not just the speeding coming up out of the railroad undercross southbound, but many, many careless left and right turns. A recent attempt on her life was even with the crossing guard for that school working. Yes, for the most part, people turning directly through crossing guard crosswalk heed the nice lady's presence, but too many are watching her and violate the other crosswalks while distracted. Turning off Valencia onto Lemon is nearly a blind corner, with cars facing east trying to turn south. The railroad underpass hides southbound traffic, and with the excess speed often seen, there is something, there's something between little and no decision time for drivers to avert the tragedy this corner will certainly produce in time. Sure, at times they're doing the turn on a red light and will be to blame for the collision, but plenty wait for the green light and an awfully nearly hit by southbound speeders running the red light. Said speeders come up out of the dip, see the yellow light or turning red, and already over the speed limit, they chose to punch it instead of stop. Perhaps a few days of a couple of hours picking off and ticketing the worst of the repeat offenders will calm this down a little. It's commuter and student traffic that does this the most. Many seen speeding are doing so five days a week. I understand this is only one of many bad corners in Fullerton, but this does have a school at the corner, and I hate to think of the consequences of a collision diverted vehicle going through the flimsy schoolyard fence at 40-plus miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Yolanda Harrison, followed by Bernard.
Good evening.
Bonjour, council members, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Madame. I am Yolanda Harrison, a permanent snowbird and a current resident of Rancho La Paz. I have to agree about how dangerous Lemon and Valencia is. Four times, no, it's been a lot more than that, but four times I've actually been within a foot of a vehicle's front bumper, because they've just managed to stop. I'm an adult if I get killed, but imagine what the grief a parent would have if one of their kids gets killed because of how dangerous that crosswalk is. There is a school there, and so many near misses, it's just insane. I sit there sometimes, and I actually tell drivers, "Don't turn right," because I can see down Lemon to the tracks, and I can see on the other side of the tracks what's coming. They can't, because of where I sit and where they sit on Valencia, to turn right, to go down Lemon towards Orange Grove. It is very dangerous. There is going to be a fatality there, and the worst thing that could happen would be a child. Other than that, I have a small announcement to make. Two years ago, it would take a couple of months, I first started coming here in support of my good friend, who gave me a place to stay during the awful pandemic. I was actually going to be homeless in Canada at that point. I stayed here, I began to explore Fullerton, I love Fullerton, I think it can be made a lot better for walkability and accessibility. And as of a year ago tomorrow, I will have been Mrs. Harrison for a year. We've had a very, very stressful year. In July, he had a heart attack, and I know that was brought on because of all the stress the seniors at Rancho La Paz are going through. And the stuff has to be done. Rent controls have to come in, and not just for them, but for all the renters in Fullerton. There's other senior mobile home parks, other mobile home parks, manufactured home parks, renters, leaseholders. It's not good, and the situation's going to get worse. Please help.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Next speaker is Bernard, followed by Curtis Gamble, and then we have two more speakers after that.
Thank you, Dr. Charles, the Harrisons, and Councilmember Zara, for your kindness and gentle reminders to be more mindful of my choice of words. And thank you for being open to actual dialogue. I can't control the way Mr. Jung insults and lies to people, but I can control the way I react to Mr. Jung's brand of narcissism. I'm sorry, I will do better. That being said, this council majority owes several apologies to several people, starting with Mr. Jung's apology to Councilmember Zara and his constituents for Mr. Jung's two years of emotional outbursts, attempted bullying, tantrums thrown, and denying an entire district of male representation three times. Mr. Jung's attacks are all on public record. Next up, Mr. Jung owes Josh Ferguson an apology. Mr. Jung only consulted with Dick Jones upon threat of litigation, but even then, Josh had to repeat, "Fine, I'll sue them," several times, because as proven yet again in Mr. Jung's self-righteousness, Mr. Jung was defiant of the truth and reality. This serves as a reminder to all his blind followers that he can't be trusted. Same bad buffoons, same bad failures, gopruins, and explicitly, "Do not touch me, I will press charges for battery."
Next comment.
Next speaker, Curtis Gamble, and after that will be Kurt Johnston, and our last speaker that's registered is Eddie Carmona.
Hello, my name is Kurt. There's a few items I've been wondering about that I'd like to hear updates about. Progress at Hunt Branch Library, the progress at the Fox Theater. If anything's going on there, it's hard to tell. The opening of the new trail in Coyote Hills, and also the dog park, the progress and when we can anticipate the dog park moving. And since I'm talking about the dog park, I'd like to suggest an idea for maybe an alternative location for the dog park. This is a nice piece of parkland, there's a sign there saying it's Fullerton Parkland. It's along the Bassett Chiri at Valencia Mesa, pretty close to Sunny Hills High School. There's a big stretch along, a land that goes along the tracks there. I think there used to be an orchard. I think that'd be an excellent place for a dog park. There'd be parking there and plenty of room for the animals versus Harbor Boulevard. Putting the dog park there, it just seems difficult. The cars go so fast up Harbor, just the people getting in and out of there, it makes it a difficult location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless, the veterans, the OCTA bus drivers, and the low-income community. This evening, once again, I would like to share with you my thoughts for the Fullerton homeless, the veterans, the OCTA bus drivers, and the low-income community funding. Number one, the Cash Shop Card is a free Visa debit card, which allows community funding to pay for rent, electric bills, gas, and other goods and services. Number two, the City of Fullerton Municipal Code for Emergency Shelters should include tiny homes on all church property, which would be on a first-come, first-served basis. Number three, the housing element for 2021 through 2029 should also include safe RV parking programs, a rental parking space program, and tiny homes. Number four, OC 2022 point in time count states that Fullerton has over 200 homeless people living on the streets. Many live on OCTA buses and OCTA bus shelters. 4.5. Fullerton Navigation Center and Rapid Rehousing Low Income Funding should include Fullerton City Lights Apartments, Citriol Apartments, Fullerton Heights Apartments, Ventana Senior Apartments, Hudson Ridge Apartments, and Rancho La Paz Mobile Home. Number five, on February 1st, 2023, county, the county and path, people assisting the homeless opened a cold-weathered shelter at Independence Park Gym, Fullerton. Total cost to the county is $7,500 a month for rent, plus $586,000 for the service contract. Number six, we would allow, we should allow the OCTA bus drivers to pick up and drop off the homeless at all OC navigation centers and emergency shelters within a half mile of the OCTA bus stops. Also, we need yearly free OCTA bus passes for the 40,000 Cal State Fullerton students and Fullerton homeless. Number seven, on March 10th, 2022, Wilmark OC requested $28,300 for the homeless street medical program. Fullerton, number eight, Fullerton Observer, mid-November 2021, city received $2 million grant for the homeless services. Number nine, Fullerton, February 23rd, 2022, the city received $4 million in state funding to purchase a navigation center. Number 10, on July 6th, 2022, the City of Fullerton received over $5 million in funding for the Hunt Branch Library, which could also serve as a safe RV parking program with ADU, tiny homes, shelters, shelters, rapid rehousing, 24 hours, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. The Hope Center and the OCTA bus drivers should partner and sublease one of the four Goodman Logistics Center warehouses located in the City of Fullerton Industrial By Right Overlay Zone for emergency shelters. It's time that we start working together in order to better serve the Fullerton homeless, low-income residents, as well as the OCTA bus drivers and veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Eddie Carmona, and I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Very well. Mr. Carmona, good evening.
First, I'd like to thank the Fullerton City Council and the city staff for all the work they do, and for allowing me to participate in your meetings. It means a lot to me, I get a chance to, you know, practice. Second, I'd like to invite everybody in attendance to Assemblymember Corksylvas' meet your Assemblymember event happening on March 11th at the Fullerton Public Library Conference Room. There will be treats, there will be discussion of legislature, and we'd love to hear from you. Oh, thank you. It's going to be at 10:00 a.m., and I hope to see you there. Thanks again.
Thank you. Anybody on virtual, on Zoom? Madam City Clerk, anyone on Zoom? All right, very well, we'll bring this back to council.
you beautiful, and all the people that are watching us and present. I'm Eglene Nunzi, the Community Liaison Zone for the Center for Healthy Neighborhoods. And I'm here, you see, full of gratitude for our Chief of Police, Chief Dunn, and the Police Department, which they did, you know, a beautiful event for our leaders at the center. He was very touching for all of us, recognized the work that we do in our community. Thank you for your great job, Chief Dunn. You're a leader in our community. We have so much respect and gratitude for you and all the work you do. You are truly showing the people that community policing is possible, and you do it with so much grace. And you see, we are so grateful for having you in our city. I think you are a blessing to all of us. Thank you so much, and thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers registered last minute? All right. We'll bring this back to council for council reports. We'll start off with Councilmember Charles.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Jung. First, I'd like to alert everyone that Associated Road between Yorbalinda Boulevard and Bassett Chiri is being repaved. We are fixing the streets starting today. While it's great we are fixing the streets, please use a different route while the work continues. And thousands of residents, students, staff, and faculty who work at two of our cities, three universities, use this route every day, and I want to commend our public works, folks, on this project. In addition, I would like to take a moment to reflect on the terrible tragedy that happened in our neighboring city of Anaheim over the weekend. If you didn't hear, a woman was killed by a falling tree, which pancaked the SUV in which she was sitting. My condolences go out to the family. This did happen from a tree at a city park in Anaheim, which indicates to me the urgent importance- importance of our trees and maintaining them, particularly after heavy rains. And if you haven't heard, another storm is coming later this week. So I would like to direct our staff to give council a report as soon as possible on the status of our urban forest plan, along with the current work that we're doing in checking our beautiful decades-old, some of them over 100-year-old trees, for any issues that might cause them to fall with the extreme weather that we're experiencing right now. And lastly, I feel I must use my time to bring up an issue that is to me of great importance but is often swept under the rug. First, I would like to thank everyone who takes their time out of their lives to make their views known here at Fullerton City Council Meetings. Thank you. It's intimidating for most people to speak up at all or to come here. When you stand at the podium and speak, I want you to know that I truly appreciate that you care about Fullerton, and what we're doing as a council, and I will make sure to listen. I don't have a time limit. That's part of the perks. Second, to anyone who does come to speak, I want to be very clear that I respect your right to your voice under our laws, including your chosen name, and it is not a matter of winning to have the right to speak, it is your right to speak. And whether your name was given by parents or chosen by you, as my last name, Charles, was chosen by me when I got married, that was my choice. It is your name, and I will use it with respect. I consider it to be just the right thing to do. Finally, while I respect everyone's right to speak in this room, including those of us on the council when it is their time, and this is my time, I urge all of us, and myself included, to reflect on our words and consider their impact. We all want to move Fullerton forward, and while we can debate about how best to do that and even disagree, I hope we can conduct ourselves in this meeting in a way that uplifts and represents Fullerton well. Thank you, and I look forward to many productive meetings this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunlap, anything, sir?
No updates tonight, sir.
Very well. Councilmember Zara?
Yes, thank you. I don't have updates per se, but first of all, I'd like to wish Mr. and Mrs. Harrison happy anniversary. I also would like to thank our Chief Dunn as well for being always responsive. I had a community meeting at the Ventana and with some of the senior residents there, and he was kind enough to show up and advise on some of the concerns on security and safety and parking that they have been going through, so I just want to give him a thank you for that. And I would like for, if possible, to look at a couple of things at the Ventana to see. I know we looked at their contract when there was that abrupt increase in rent, but is there possible to go back and look at the development agreement that we have with them to see what parking that is allowed or that is given to the residents? Because it seems that there is no assigned parking there, and a lot of the seniors are having to park outside because of other people coming in and taking these spots. So maybe we can take a look at that and see if there's a solution there, because it is a safety concern for some of the seniors to park outside on the street and have to walk a distance to their home. The other thing is with rent increases going beyond just, I know we had the situation at Rancho La Paz, and we created that rent assistance program that I believe helped, definitely helped some residents. It wasn't ideal, but that was available funding that we had. But with the increase of rent, and especially with vulnerable seniors throughout the city, I'd like to see options of that same funding, I know this is federal funding, to see if we can expand that program to include seniors and veterans citywide. Currently, it's only seniors and veterans at mobile parks. So maybe we can take a look at that. I believe there is additional funding available, so it shouldn't be difficult to expand it somehow. And I also know that on the Lemon and Valencia intersection, in the past, we did a study, and there was some modifications to that particular intersection to improve visibility and even the timing of the traffic light there. But I think maybe it's due for another study there, because, and I remember that was part of the discussion back then, is that we can take a look at and study it again, but then we had the pandemic in between which altered traffic flow, and so maybe we can do another study at that intersection and see what can be done to further improve that, the crossing there. And then I know there were, there was a little bit of issue on signups and for speaking and so on. And in looking at this year and last year, the attendance at our council meetings, I really would urge to bring back our decorum and our council time to see if we can reconsider that, to bring it back to a later time so people can have more time to come back from work. 5:30 is a time when it's, people are still at work or on their way back. So I, my first two years here, I mean, I think we've had more people during COVID, the time of COVID, come and attend than we are seeing now. So I really would like to see if we can bring these two items back for a look at them again, and also maybe remove some of the restrictions on having to sign up and, or at least clarify that, that people don't need to use their name, don't need to sign up, they can come and speak anonymously without us having to restrict any of this. So if I can get a second to bring this, these two items back.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And then finally, I'd like to, a couple more things. On the Hunt Library updates, I know that the Ad Hoc Committee has been meeting. They've had two meetings so far. However, in talking to residents, it seems that these have not been publicized very well, and people are not able to attend because they just don't know they're going on. And I think this is a very important subject, and I, and these are, I don't believe they're even recorded on video, so people can't watch them in playback. So I know there's a third meeting coming up, so maybe we can do a little bit better at publicizing and announcing it. And finally, I would like to pull item number five from the consent calendar. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Protem, anything, sir?
Yes, thank you. Just a brief report. I've attended a few meetings this year for OC SAN, the Orange County Sanitation District. And I can report on something that maybe a lot of you have seen already. Recently was mailed out a notification of a fee increase on sanitation and sewage costs. And, you know, we've had a real tough time, the same is true at Orange County Water District with higher costs, increased maintenance, and that's feeding into CIP increases as well, capital improvement projects. Supply chain shortages, chemical costs have really increased drastically, and construction materials increases, again, very deep into double digits. So I've been fairly pleased with what the staff's recommendation has been. There will be an increase in our sewage sanitation costs, and it's been proposed as a 3% increase. 3%, I hate to see it increase at all, but that's sub-inflation, and considering the amount that the department is absorbing to try to help hold these costs down, I think it's about the best that can be done. Now, many of you are aware that the costs for your sewage and sanitation appear on your property tax bill. And I just checked mine to be updated on it before this. Mine translates to a little under $30 per month for the year. And so that means that a 3% increase is only going to raise that cost by about a dollar a month. So the average impact for the average residential user is going to be relatively small. So a lot has been done with orientation and virtual tours and everything. We begin March with in-appearance meetings. So I'll have more to report on that later. On the Orange County Water District front, we're very hopeful. The forecasts right now are for on-and-off, fairly heavy rains for the next couple weeks or so. And February is usually our heaviest rainy month of the year. So it seems to have been saved for the last week here and a little bit beyond into March. That would do wonders, at least in terms of trying to make up for the three-year drought that we just found ourselves in. That's all for this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, sir. Thank you. We will take item number five that Councilman Zara wants to review at the end of the meeting.
I'll move the balance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye. We move on to regular business. Credit card fee structure is Director Chang at the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. It's labeled item number seven of slides. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, staff seek direction as to whether the city will continue to absorb or pass credit card fees to customers to remit payment to the city via credit card or e-check. Next slide, please. Customers may currently remit payment for city services via cash, check, credit card, and by late 2023, also via e-check. Cash and credit, and cash and check-type payments include checks issued by the customer from their bank's online portal, which carry no cost because the payments are pushed by the customer to the business, or in this case, the city, the customer is making payment to. With customer authorization, credit card and e-check payments are actually pulled from the, by the business from the customer's credit card or bank account and carry associated costs. Next slide. Credit card fees are comprised of two primary components. Fees charged by the credit card companies such as Visa and MasterCard, and fees charged by the merchant and gateway providers. Credit card company fees differ depending on the type of credit card used by the customer because the types of credit card rewards and programs vary. These fees are set by the credit card company and are not negotiable. Merchant and gateway provider services enable the business to accept credit card as well as e-check payment types. The gateway essentially acts as a toll road or pipeline, securely passing information from the credit card company to the merchant provider, while the merchant provider essentially acts as a clearinghouse or advances the money to the business and settles with the credit card company. E-checks are typically charged at a flat dollar amount, while credit card fees are typically assessed at a percentage of the transaction amount plus a fixed amount. Credit card fees are also typically charged at the greater of the percentage of the transaction amount or a minimum fixed fee. Next slide. Currently, the city fully absorbs credit card fees, and the city's fees and charges schedules do not currently incorporate credit card fee costs, which are absorbed by the city. Next slide. The city currently pays about $400,000 in credit card fees. About 80% of the fees is the component charged by the credit card company with the balance for merchant and gateway services, and that's identified in the first column, which is the credit card fee, company fees of $315,000, and merchant and gateway service providers at $80,000. This table also breaks out the fees incurred by utility as well as non-utility related credit card payments.
Director Chang, if I may, could you explain just for the public what's the difference between utility and non-utility charges?
Yeah, so residents and businesses who pay their water, sewer, sanitation, and trash bill, that falls under the utility category, and everything else falls into non-utility. So that would be if you're wanting to pay for a program at the Parks and Rec Department, or if you're trying to pay a developer impact fee, or a public works or fire fee, those fall in the non-utility category. Next slide. So credit card fees are currently being reviewed as an opportunity to pass on or to recover costs. The four options outlined in the agenda report are presented on this slide and will be reviewed in the next few slides in further detail. Next slide. So with option one, credit card or e-check fees would be borne by the customer for selecting to pay their invoices to the city via credit card or e-check. With this option, if a customer elects to pay via credit card or e-check, they would be informed of the transaction charge and given the option to proceed with a credit card or e-check payment, and this would essentially be an opt-in transaction. Next slide. In the following example, rates are really for illustrative purposes only. So the rates in this example include both the credit card company as well as the merchant and gateway provider fees. So it's the combination of both. With example A, if a customer wanted to pay $100 invoice, they would be charged $103.25. The city would receive $100 with a $325 processing fee divided amongst the credit card company, merchant, and gateway providers. I'm sorry?
I believe you said $325.
Oh, sorry about that. $3.25. Thank you for clarifying that. That's a significant difference. So here with example B, if a customer wanted to pay a $20 invoice, they would be charged $22.50. The city would receive the $20 with the $2.50 processing fee divided among the credit card company and the merchant and gateway providers. Next slide.
So Director Chang?
Yes.
One more question. I know you said here there's a minimum charge. Is there a cap? Or a maximum? Like, does it, is it always, like, is there a cap to the percentage? Let's say this is $100, the amount example, let's say it's $1,000.
It would, it depends on the credit card that you're using and the contract that you're essentially entering into. So the next, the next step after city council provides direction, we're going to be bringing an agenda item hopefully at the next meeting to determine which companies that we're going to be moving to, and depending on which company, the fees will vary.
Yeah, Councilmembers are, usually the fees vary versus what card you utilize. If you utilize a debit card, they're often higher than credit card fees, so in terms of what credit card processing companies charge. So I think she'll be able to give more direction to us.
So I think in this example, I use the 3.25%, but currently with our current merchant services and gateway providers, if you look at the credit card, the invoices that we get on a monthly basis, depending on every single type of credit card that we take in for that particular month, the fees all vary, the percentages all vary, the minimum amounts all vary. So I just kind of used a rounded number to just illustrate how this would operate.
Right. So I understand all of that. What's the maximum amount? That's what I'm asking, is that, is there a, let's say if this is $1,000, and is there going to be, is it going to be $10.95? That's what I'm asking. Are there instances like that? Are there gateway charges that will go, will increase with, as a percentage for the total cost in the end?
Since the credit card fees are made up of two components, the credit card companies, they charge, they assess a certain percentage and/or a minimum amount, and then the merchant services and gateway provider do the same, but the bulk of the money actually goes to the credit card companies. So it's hard to say when you say that, is there maximum? There's no maximum transaction amount, but in terms of the fees, the percentages, they're at the will of the credit card company.
I think what should be clarified for the councilman, and excuse me if I get your question wrong, I think he's asking whether or not those percentages change as you get increased the amount.
Oh, the total dollar value.
Yeah, the total, that's exactly, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Like, if the charge is $1,000, what would be the customer fee that's passed on to the resident?
It's all set by the credit card company, and what I've seen in my review of the invoices, the credit card companies charge, it's essentially a percentage based on that type of credit card that they're using.
What do we have currently? Because we're absorbing some of these costs now, right? So give me an example of what we have currently.
They range from like 1%, probably upwards of 5, I've seen on the invoices, from the credit card companies themselves.
I got you.
Maybe I misunderstood.
No, no, no. Here's what it is. He's just simply asking, does the percentage change if the amount increases depending on the set credit card?
That we have, I haven't seen that.
Okay, right. They're usually just exactly the same depending on the amount, outside of the minimum.
Yeah, but every credit card company charges a different rate.
All right. At a 3% credit card company, right? Let's say a 3% credit card company. Let's say a 3% credit card company. What would be the total passed on to the consumer at $1,000?
It would be 3% of the $1,000.
So $30?
Yes.
That's what I'm, okay.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, sorry. So going on to slide nine, similarly, in the following example, rates are really for illustrative purposes only. And the rates in this example are only for merchant and gateway provider fees. So with an e-check, since that is essentially being pulled from the customer's bank account, they tend to be a flat number, and these fees go to the merchant or gateway services providers. So here with example A, you can see that with, if the customer wanted to pay a $100 invoice, they would be charged $101.95. The city would receive the $100, and the $1.95 processing fee would be divided amongst the merchant and gateway providers. With example B, if a customer wanted to pay a $20 invoice, they would be charged $21.95. The city would receive the $20, and the $1.95 processing fee would be divided amongst the merchant and gateway services providers. So it's a flat number regardless of the transaction amount. So next slide. So here with option two, it's essentially a blended option where the city, the non-utility credit card and e-check fees would be borne by the customer, while the city would continue to absorb utility credit card and e-check fees. Typically, utility agencies get a lower credit card transaction fee, or given that by their different credit card companies. So a lot of utilities you see tend to absorb that cost. Next slide. So as presented on this slide, you can see that the utility-related credit card payments is about 80% of all credit card transactions. Because of the high transaction amount and the number of transactions, utility entities typically are charged lower fees by the credit card companies when the utility absorbs the credit card fees. So what I've seen is that if the city decides to pass on the utility credit card fees, the customers don't get the benefit of that discounted credit card rate. So next slide. So with the blended option, because non-utility credit card fees would be borne by the customer, the city would anticipate saving about $140,000 a year. And then, next slide. With options three and four, the city would continue to fully absorb credit card and e-check fees. The difference between three and four is that with option four, the departments would take City Council direction to incorporate non-utility credit card and e-check fees into future fee studies to update the fees and charges schedule. This may, over time, support cost recovery of non-utility credit card and e-check fees in the amount of the same amount of $140,000. Next slide. And with that, the different recommendation options are presented on slide 14, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Before we have council questions for Director Chang, we will seek public comment on this matter. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public registered to comment?
I'm turning on the speaker instead of my microphone. There we go. No speakers on this item, and I see no hands raised in Zoom.
All right. We'll bring it back to council for questions. Councilmember Zaro, please.
Yeah, I have a couple more questions. Historically, what was the purpose in the past for the city absorbing this when the city started charging, using credit cards to take fees? Do we know why this was not initially?
I think it's been fairly recently, probably within the last five to 10 years, that agencies have started looking at passing on the credit card fees to customers. I don't know what the impetus in the past was to just absorb.
Right, because businesses have been doing it for a long, long time.
That is correct, yes.
And then other cities, you mentioned other cities, this is now the norm, that it just passed on to the consumer?
It kind of depends on the agency. I think, at least what I've seen personally with the county, the property taxes, they tend to pass that on, and you can elect to opt-in, or you can say, okay, I want to do an e-check, or I'll just mail in my payment. I know other agencies are evaluating this because the credit card fees just have continued to increase over time. Just the reward cards and the different types of programs credit cards offer, they're essentially passing that on to the vendors who take those credit cards as payment.
Right. And now, if this council, let's say, decides to pass on to a pass-through model, these savings, where would they revert back to? Any particular fund? Because utility is different than business, then different, do they go to each of their own departments?
It would go back to the different departments and the different funding sources from which those departments are, they pay the fees.
Got it, okay.
So, the bulk of the utilities are housed in the water fund.
Right. And then one last question. For now, it's just direction, so you would be bringing back a policy later on, or is this if we decide tonight?
With the city moving towards a Tyler implementation for cashiering, general billing and utility billing, we're looking, because Tyler cashiering is only compatible with two different vendors, merchant services and gateway vendors, the next agenda item would be taking the direction from City Council and building that into the contract that we are looking to sign with one of those options.
Right. Because the only, I mean, the only concern I have with this is that there are no people commenting on this. And I'm a little concerned that, you know, if we, let's say, decide tonight on a pass-through model, that people are going to be surprised on their next bill that suddenly they've been charged a fee without knowing about it.
Well, they wouldn't be alerted to that fact. So if you're trying to make a payment, remit a payment online with the new cashiering system, you'd be direct, you'd get a notification saying that if you want to move forward with this credit card transaction, a fee of X dollar amount or percentage will be incurred. Otherwise, you can elect to opt-out and then mail in your check, or do an e-check through your bank. On an e-check.
A way to provide advance notice to someone of that, like perhaps with their bill that starting next month, they're starting, I mean, giving some kind of?
We have enough lead time right now. If City Council decides to do anything other than options three and four, we would probably do a mail insert and probably do that for the next few, at least, utility bill cycles. We could put signage up at the different areas that we take in credit card payments to notify customers in advance.
All right, very well. Anything further, sir? All right.
I have a question, a clarification I'd like to ask.
Councilmember Charles, I was just going to call on you.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I wasn't sure if we were done over here. So my question is, thinking about the new types of banking that are emerging, especially among younger people, quite a few college students, who are using completely online banks, like Venmo, as their only bank and their only source of income, of something like a Venmo debit card. And of course, if it was an actual credit card, which I know they offer as well, that's a different story. But like that debit card that comes where there's no physical bank, they don't have checks, I mean, colleges are not using checks these days. So would those be also incurring fees as well?
The debit cards are also incurring fees because it's something that the merchant or the city would be pulling out, and that transaction cost is borne by the business, essentially.
All right. Anything further? Mr. Mayor Potem, please.
What I have, at least in my experience, it's a little more unusual to charge a fee on an e-check. And one of the reasons why I think it might be wise for us to continue to absorb e-checks is to incentivize that form of payment. Even in the case where someone comes in and writes a paper check, we have handling costs and other labor costs in processing that. And I'm a little bit surprised, even on low-level transactions, that there'd be a flat fee of this amount. Because credit card companies, it's a little more understandable. They have risks of fraud and of non-collectibility, and they have carrying costs as well. None of those is true with an e-check. An e-check is absolutely guaranteed, you know. So I think that if we were to encourage people to make payments by e-check rather than the other modes, we would actually have a net benefit. And to have that encouragement, to say there are no charges for e-checks. And that fits very much into what Councilmember Charles was talking as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor Potem, I did want to propose that option. When the county's concerned, an e-check does not incur fee. And the reason why is we're getting that money directly from that banking institution in real time. So I would propose a fifth option, if I may, that e-checks are continued, we absorb the cost, whatever that cost may be, and that when it comes to credit card processing, that it is passed through to the...
The one issue that we encounter is that for the Intergov platform, we're not able to split the credit card and the e-check fees. For that particular platform, it's full absorption or a full pass-on. Those are only two options right now.
You may want to let them know what Intergov is.
Oh, Intergov is the permitting software that Community Economic Development and Public Works uses to collect permit and developer-type related fees.
I see. So you could do that option on all other types of payments, but not the Intergov?
We do run the risk with the e-check fees is because it is a flat dollar amount. So if someone is trying to make a small payment at a Parks and Rec or a fire counter potentially, we would be incurring that dollar and change fee for potentially even a $5 transaction.
I see. I understand that. All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and I'm looking to quantify the non-utility fees. Is that this chart on page four? Do you know, on page four of our report?
Sorry, those aren't the, this is the total transaction dollar amounts. That's how much we run through the credit card machine.
Right. And that's, but that's both direct and non-direct, right? Or indirect?
That includes both the credit card company as well as the merchant services and gateway provider. I may not be understanding the question.
Yeah, so, oh, sorry, the non-utility fees, because there's a combination of total fees. I'm trying to get a quantification, because I guess my only concern, and I do support the no-cost option, I think that should very much be in play. But I also think the, I mean, I just, I'm not seeing why we wouldn't bill or pass through the non-utility fees. You know, just my own kind of thought process. And so I was looking to quantify what that total amount was.
So the total amount of the non-utility credit transaction amounts is probably about $6 million. So 31.6 million of transaction volume was charged via credit card. 25.4 of that was related to utilities. Everything else is non-utility.
Okay.
Anything further than, I'd seek a motion if we are done discussing this matter.
If I may, I...
Councilmember.
First of all, I like the idea of having some lead time and making sure that people are aware of what's coming. With the cost of water going up, and it seems sanitation and all of those things, I'm a little worried about, for now, some of our residents who are low-income or fixed income, because sometimes even $20 extra, $30 extra could impact people. And so I, just for the sake of being cautious about moving forward with something like this, I would go with a blended structure right now and see if we can absorb the utility in the item, option number two, and see how that goes. Because, just because the impact is very different between non-utility and utility.
Understood. Is there a second for that motion?
I second that. The motion is we adopt option number two?
Yes, with obviously direction to give lead time for people, to make people aware, however we do that.
Yes, I second that.
Very well. Is there a substitute motion, otherwise?
You know, I guess my only thing, because I'm looking at it, so the 6 million, the roughly 6 million that we're accounting for here, these are mostly like development fees and likely expenses that are going to be paid by businesses. Most businesses are going to pay with a check anyways. So, I mean, the reality is if they want the flexibility or latitude of paying on a credit card, because, you know, whatever, they want business points or miles or something like that, then that should be billed to them at the cost. It shouldn't be, the city shouldn't be subsidizing that, I don't think. So maybe there's, I know, you know, Mayor Potem had discussed, I guess, the option of a no-fee, or a no, yeah, a no-fee e-check option. So perhaps the fifth bullet point, or fifth option, would be something, one with no-fee for paying by e-check. You know, non-utility fees build back, or build, you know, I guess, pass through. And then, so I think those are the two items that I had concern on. Am I missing anything?
I don't believe you can.
I think we, if, unfortunately, with the Intergov platform, Community Economic Development and Public Works engineering fees, we cannot bifurcate and absorb the e-check fees for those. It would be either full pass or full absorption. So another option, at least for the utilities, is maybe absorb the credit card portion, I mean, absorb the e-check portion and pass on the credit card fees for the utilities is another option. We can dissect most of the other types of credit card fees, except for the ones that are related to Community Economic Development, the Building and Planning Division, as well as Engineering.
If I may, Councilwoman Dunlap, one of the issues with utilities is that these are essential, this is essential services. People have to have water, they have to pay for sewage. This is not something, this is not Parks and Rec, where it's a, so, and I'm a little worried about sometimes, some of the restaurants, for example, small businesses that we have that may see this extra fee as an impact to them, especially that we don't know what the max could be on these, right? If somebody's water bill is $1,000, you know, and it's a, so I think just for caution, just to, we can revisit this in the future?
Well, no, but to your point, I mean, I agree with you. I'm simply saying, they can pay with a check with no fee. I mean, they can, somebody can pay their, you know, they could walk to City Hall, or they could put a check in the mail and pay their utility expense with no fee. Well, they have the cost of a stamp and an envelope, but I mean, other...
I'm sorry, Mr. Dunlap. The utility is more problematic in the sense that if you are absorbing a cost, then the other utility users are in effect having to absorb that cost. When in fact, when they pay with a check, they still have to absorb some of the costs of the others. And it seems to me utility is more sensitive than other types of uses, such as plan checks and those types of things. And so I think you need to be very careful about who absorbs that cost. And in this particular situation, if you elect not to pass through that credit card charge, the other users are potentially having to absorb that cost, even though they wrote the check.
Understood. That's good, sound legal advice. Councilmember.
Thank you. I just want to respond back to what Councilman Dunlap said there. I'm thinking about the folks that don't have checking accounts, which I know it's surprising, but there are many residents who do not have either the stable enough income or...
Let me just clarify. I was not talking about, that was for the non-utility. So that was, you know, like, that were business-related.
Okay, so we're not talking about the utility?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think it sounds like we're on the same page then, that the utilities, there will be absorption, full absorption there, and it's the non-utilities you were talking about with possible e-check.
Correct.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Great. And I am in agreement with you there, which is why I think we're talking about option, the motion to approve option two is still on the table. I think that the people for the non-utility fees could opt to pay by checking, and that they will be able to do so, and evidently will save about $140,000 a year, it looks like.
And I'm not saying that we shouldn't revisit this at a later time, but maybe just, we have been doing it for years, so I think we can sit another year on it and maybe revisit it in a year's time to see how the other portion goes through. And by then, probably take a year for people to actually start being aware of that this is happening, so.
All right. But that also incurs the e-check fees back to...
And that's an option. So if City Council wanted to direct this staff to pass on all the non-utility credit card and e-check fees, what we could do with the utilities is absorb the credit card, I mean, absorb the e-check as well as the credit card fees. Or we could bifurcate the two. For utilities, if you wanted to pass on the credit card fees, you could, and we could absorb the e-check fees. That's one area we could split.
I think it's a bifurcation, is what the Mayor Potem had described, right? Having the free e-check option. It's basically taking that, making a third bullet point, and essentially creating, I think, the fifth option.
That, I think, makes the most sense, because that does lead to better outcomes as we go forward, I think, giving people that option.
Okay, then I'm going to have to continue on my point and just point out that for people that don't have a checking account, I mean, even, I mean, if you have Venmo, they don't give you a checking account number that you can then use as an e-check. All you have is that card number. And so, or, and people, some people don't even have, you know, something like that. So I'm just concerned that we are kind of making it more onerous for the lowest end of the scale on utilities, which, I wouldn't recommend doing that for utilities. I think we should just, I like option two the way it is, where we absorb the utilities as something that our residents need, and we've been doing, and we should continue to do. If we're going to revisit it next year, give them some lead time to think about it and comment on it. And go with B, is, option two also has the non-utility pushing out to the users if they want to use credit card.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just also want to just point out that some folks use their credit card to actually pay for bills that they can't afford because maybe they didn't... didn't make ends meet that month. And so they have to use a credit card, and now we're giving them an extra, extra fee to, you know, that is unexpected. So I, I think, just again, because this, the utility is an essential commodity that we all need to have, and because it involves a lot of residences, small businesses, I just want to be a little cautious in how we implement this. And I don't mind doing that at a future date. Once we start looking at this and how it's being implemented, and we don't know what credit card companies and where, or credit card processors we're, we're using yet. So maybe there's a solution down the line. But for now, I think, just for, for, just being cautious in this.
Understood. Mr. City Manager.
As I listen to the conversation, I, you, Councilmember Charles brings up Venmo. You could say Zelle. There's several, several of those types of programs. I'm not sure if those are counted as e-checks or credit cards. We may want to-
My understanding is that they would not be. I would have to go back and clarify.
We may want to check on that and be able to report back to you on those two types of programs, because I'm not sure that they're counted as either-
Those two, my understanding is that as long as it's something that's pushed by the customer to the business, that the city would not re-incur any of those fees, but I can double-check on that as well.
Okay. In the meantime, if there's not a substitute motion, there is a motion on the table?
Yeah, no, I've got a substitute motion. Or alternatively, I mean, look, unless there's urgency here, I mean, I'd be fine with seeing this brought back with the two options that have been discussed, option two, and then the addition of the second option. And then maybe that way it's a little bit cleaner and we're able to kind of evaluate between the two, the, the true, you know, financial impact.
All right. So continuing the item until what date?
You know, I mean, look, I'm not, I think staff's probably almost there anyway. I mean, it's just adding the, the new option. I mean, is that something that's reasonable for?
Well, we could take direction from city council now, so-
We could bring it back on March, whatever, March 7th. We could bring back on March 7th with those two options for you to look at. And we could also bring back the Zelle and Venmo, make sure that those are not charged.
Would you be able to bring back at that time also some of the options for processing companies? Or you wouldn't be able to reach, research that without an actual direction from here?
There's only two companies that, from Merchant Services and Gateway Provider, that we'd be able to use that has some level of integration with Tyler Cash Earring. So we can bring both of those at the same time. And then depending on city council direction, we can work with them to revise the, the costing, whether it's absorbed or passed or some blended component of that based on city council direction.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles.
Can I clarify? We are voting on Councilmember Dunlap's?
Yes, the substitute motion.
Aye.
To continue. Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Next item is our 2023 legislative platform. I'm going to ask our deputy city manager, Madam Deputy City Manager, good, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a brief presentation for you this evening. Okay. Excellent. All right, thank you. So this evening, we will be reviewing the 2023 legislative platform. For the council members that are new, the legislative platform establishes City of Fullerton's legislative priorities for the purpose of advocacy efforts at various levels of government. And it also provides direction to different departments and other advocates on our position on different policy matters. Okay, so the platform is typically updated every year. It was updated last February. I'm sorry, last March was the last time it went to council. And the platform continues, or we will continue to update the legislative platform based on new issues or priorities. And I'll be going over a couple of those items this evening in terms of our proposed additions this year. And then, like I mentioned, generally, the platform will outline whether, as a city, we are in a position of support or opposition on various matters. For the most part, it's not recommended that we add things on there that we are necessarily remain neutral. And then if there's any policy or policy matter that comes, that comes up that's not directly outlined in here, in that case, we would bring it back to council consideration on that individual item. And the platform is based on the city's three guiding principles, which we base most of what we do here. And those three are preserving local control, promoting fiscal sustainability, and supporting funding opportunities. Okay. Now I'll briefly touch on our proposed updates to the 2023 legislative platform. And these were proposed by the various department heads from the different departments. So the first proposed changes include items number six and 13. Those are proposed from our administrative department, and would allow more flexibility when it comes to remote meetings, and oppose policies that increase our voter thresholds. And one policy, policy item number 44, was added to the land use planning and housing efforts, or to oppose efforts that require local jurisdictions within Orange County to adhere to additional surplus land act requirements. Excellent. Okay. There's also two proposed additions for Parks and Recreation, policy 47 and 48, and a slight language change for policy number 50. And these would encourage state funding requests to meet sustainability goals and support accessibility opportunities to the public. Okay. And then, lastly, two proposed changes for policies 56 and 57 were added by our human resources and risk management. And one was proposed removal by our fire department. This would be inconsistent with the new fire contract that was recently approved. And the human resources and risk management policies support careful review, consideration, and financial penalties of litigation with no substantive objectives against the city. And then at the last, policy or legislative platform update, there were several policies that directly called out COVID-19. And so what we're proposing is to slightly modify those proposed policy objectives to remove the COVID-19 word, but to keep pandemic in there so that we can be flexible in terms of, you know, let's say another pandemic happens and it's not COVID-19, but something else, that we have policies in place that would be able to respond to that. Next slide. Okay, thank you. Okay. So once the legislative platform is approved, city staff will use this legislative agenda as one of our policy documents to guide future grant funding opportunities. An example of this is the earmark request process that is typically done through our state and federal legislators. This process has actually begun, and we are looking to submit our request as a city in the next couple of weeks. And so tonight, we wanted to bring forward these four different project categories of what staff is looking at in terms of potential funding requests, and that we're hoping to get your support for these items. And so those four, and in no particular order, are a potential street infrastructure project, a water sewer project, replacement of fire apparatus, which we have three that are past their useful life, and a potential project for building improvements to several or a historic city-owned building. Okay. So lastly, we're looking for guidance from the city council for just general legislative advocacy, just to make sure that we remain consistent in our approach as a city. And so those three potential items for consideration, excuse me. The first is that the city manager's office can represent the city on advocacy and funding requests that are consistent with the legislative platform or other projects included in the city's priorities or budget. And then the next one is that the mayor or council designee can represent the city on advocacy and funding requests consistent with the legislative platform. And then third is if funding is through an agency that works directly with a department, that the department director can advocate if it's consistent with city policy. Excuse me. Okay. So to conclude, this evening, we're seeking council support to adopt the 2023 legislative platform with the proposed changes I discussed this evening, and to authorize the mayor, or the Mayor Protam in the mayor's absence, to sign policy and position letters consistent with the platform, and to provide guidance to the city, to staff on the city council legislative advocacy process proposed. And that concludes my presentation, unless there are questions.
Thank you. Before we take questions, I'll seek public comment on this matter. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this side?
We do have three speakers registered in person. I do have one hand raised in a moment in Zoom. Todd Harrison, you are first up. And Curtis Gamble, you'll be next.
Mr. Harrison, good evening, sir.
For the record, I'm still Todd Harrison. AB 978, what's that most ask? My answer, it is a reason to amend the 2023 legislative agenda document. This time, I'm not speaking generally of what I think should be broad policy, but specifically targeting one goal, complete with my suggestion as to the change needed. In the section on public safety, there is a one-sentence mandate that reads, number 63, support initiatives involving county, state, and federal governments to reduce and prevent homelessness in Orange County. I'll bet Mr. Gamble will have something to say about that. The city council likely knows where I'm going with tonight's comment. I would like to see a second sentence in that line item, or perhaps even one more line item. Support the expansion of AB 978 to all mobile home parks in California. Why? Well, you're all familiar with what brings me to every city council meeting, the abuses of fixed-income mobile homeowners in places now owned by John Saunders and his ilk. Don't forget the fuss over last years that started with him and his 60% rent increase notification. The then-city, current city council almost gave the residents of RLP effective help, only submitting to his charm and threats at the last moment. It took we seniors years to get help at the state level, finally culminating with the passage and signing of AB 978. As a result of last-minute negotiations, the bill was crippled with language so that it only applied to one mobile home park in the state. Mr. Saunders' actions were so blatantly harmful, even though the lobbying for all the other park owners could not prevent the attempt to control the damage he still does. AB 978 needs to be broadened to all mobile home parks in our state. Mr. Saunders is not the only predatory landlord fixed-income residents face. He is in fact suing the state in federal court to overturn AB 978 for picking on only him. Simple fix, make it broadly applicable law. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next comment, please.
Next speaker is Curtis Gamble. After that will be Anjali.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless, veterans, low-income, OCTA bus drivers, low-income community. I'd just like to say, I support the item. I think that she did a very good job, and I, I support it. Thank you guys for being so clear on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next comment, please.
And our last speaker in chambers is Anjali.
Commissioner, good evening.
Hello, thank you. My name is Anjali Tapadia, and I live here in Fullerton. I appreciate this presentation, and I agree with it on multiple points. As you know, active transport is an issue that's very important to me. And with regards to the street improvements, earmark, I was hoping for a little bit more clarity. Perhaps that could be written into the presentation specifically for active transport, so that that, that aspect of street improvements is not overlooked in budget considerations. There's a lot of important things that have to be taken care of by the city, I know. But since this is actually a line item for earmarking, and since active transport considerations can sometimes be overlooked, and grant funding, which is available, is still sometimes difficult to acquire, given our city's resources, I was wondering if we could consider making active transportation infrastructure improvements an integral part of street infrastructure improvements, and consider earmarking funds along with that, along with that line item. Specifically, when I talk about active transport considerations, this is particularly important for situations where, for example, we don't have a developer coming in to, to, to build a development de novo. This is especially important for things, situations where we're improving streets, and we have the opportunity to make active transport, transport improvements at the same time while the street is being renovated. This is a good time to make active transportation improvements, like, you know, bike lanes, pedestrian infrastructure, et cetera. But if we have earmarking for that cause, then we might be able to prevent some of the issues we've had in the past where sort of active transportation infrastructure is written out due to budgetary restrictions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our virtual speaker.
And we have one Zoom speaker. Kayla, you should be able to unmute.
Awesome. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So I definitely like this, this agenda item as well. I really, especially like the part about identifying external funding sources. And think that issues like housing, environmental justice, including the North of Sea Water Basin, which is a super fun site, and I know that we have the P-Fos plants there, but I would like to see some more testing and studies being done by the City of Fullerton, potentially some soil lead issues from some of our preliminary studies with OCEJ going on in Santana, and some air quality stuff in South Fullerton, South of the Tracks, and some other issues regarding like state monies. I think that pursuing those external funding sources is going to be incredibly important in helping to get any movement on these issues. I know that Fullerton is aiming for that budget neutrality or budget deficit neutral sort of thing. So I, and I know that in cities like Santana and Irvine, they've pursued like state money to, and resources to get some of their progress in a lot of those areas. So I'm very glad to see Fullerton moving in a similar direction for many issues that we need help on. So just want to express my support for the external funding sources, and hope to see some action on some of those items. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring this back to council if there are no other commenters on this item. I, I thought this was important to bring before council and our, and our public. You know, the legislative platform is critically important, because these funding sources, both federally and at the state and even at the county, are finite. So we need to be not only unified in terms of a council, but unified in terms of staff, as to how we go about approaching what funds to get, from what locations, to, through what advocacy. I want to make sure that we were aligned in terms of this platform, and that we agreed that this was our best case of moving forward and making sure that Fullerton got its share of not only federal funding, state funding, but also county funding as well. Oftentimes, these legislative bodies, they have a self-determination. I suppose that's, that's within their right. But if we as a city are going to advocate, we should be united in that advocacy. So if there's other comments, I'm, I'm happy to entertain. Councilmember Charles, please.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate the, the public speaker's comments. I appreciate Mayor Jung's comments. Actually, it was on him. He used it three minutes. And I, I do appreciate all those things, but I would like to point out something. As the newest member of the council, I might be, and I could be wrong in this, but I believe I'm the only person here with a public policy graduate-level degree. I have a master's in public policy. This stuff is fun for me. And I received this document late on Thursday. It wasn't even available for my meeting, my normally scheduled meeting with the city manager, so we could talk about it in broad terms, but I didn't have it in front of me. I didn't get it till late Thursday. Friday, City Hall and staff were off, because that's our normal Friday. Weekend, of course, they're not here. And then, of course, yesterday was a holiday. So I literally have had zero time to be able to talk to staff about this in depth, to be able to really look at it. Although I do appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I appreciate the presentation. I'm not saying that I have issues with it. But I do think I need more time to absorb it and be able to talk about it and clarify things and understand where this is coming from. So I would like to make a motion to move this. Also, I will say that the, the last, the deadline for the legislature at the state level to submit their bills was last Friday. I know this because on my project, where I do analysis for the legislature, I got to sign my bills this weekend, because the deadline was on Friday to go to committee. So at this point today, basically, is when we know when the bills are that are actually in committees and are going to be discussed at the state level. So I would like to have the extra time to be able to- So I would like to have the extra time to be able to get into this document, talk about it with staff more, work on it, and then really be able to, to make an informed conversation about it at the next council meeting. So I would like to move that we move this to the next council meeting.
You know, I think I'm okay making a decision tonight simply because, I mean, they're general, most, most are general in nature and it doesn't necessarily apply to specific bills, right? It's, you know, concepts. And I think one thing in particular that I noticed in my reading is that there are a few items that, you know, that either disappeared, that perhaps we should have opposed, notably the fire item, but also the administrative item number 13, and really, I think that's the big one for me, is that it says oppose policies that could increase voter thresholds for local revenue measures and the potential for litigation over taxes and fees. Personally, I believe we should be supporting that policy because the reality is we shouldn't be encouraging policy. We shouldn't be encouraging or supporting a policy that would lower the threshold or adjust that threshold against voters and taxpayers. There's obvious, there are various hurdles in place at the state level now and we shouldn't look to make those any easier or, you know, to the detriment of taxpayers. So I, I think that one's backwards. We should be supporting, not opposing. And, you know, so those, that was really my thought. I mean, that's where I'm at.
And, you know, to Councilmember Charles, your point, the, these legislative bodies are not continuing because we are. They march forward and fund these as they may. I think it's important to just have this guideline and guardrail in place. I don't think there's any thing that's really objectional about any of this as far as I could see. I do tend to agree with the, my fellow council member in terms of what he opposes in this. Maybe the language is a little backwards. But that said, Mr. Mayor, Portem, any thoughts, sir?
Yes, I concur very much with Councilmember Dunlap. And to have a platform out there does not mean that it couldn't be modified or any, section of it couldn't be modified at any point during the year. So I think it's better to have something out there and should we have improvements, have those suggested that can be handled in the normal course of action of the council?
Indeed, sir.
The normal course of action does seem to be March, though. I heard from staff that it was March of last year that this was approved. And here we are in February. It could wait until our March 7th meeting and still be on our normal timeline, as well as giving me the ability to actually read the document in depth and be able to get my questions answered about it. Again, they were closed on the days that I had this document. I have not been able to speak to anyone about it.
All right. Any thoughts, sir? Go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, I think there are two, two things here to look at. One is our, our general policy. And then one is the, the funding advocacy, right, asking our legislators to bring money and earmarks to, to Fullerton. Those are two separate things. And I think the earmarks item, that is, there is a deadline coming up. I think some legislators have already put their, their deadline for submitting projects in place. Some haven't opened up yet. But those will require Councilman Charles, the member Charles, requires staff to put together a budget and put together a project. So we could take these, this item and we could always revisit the policy at a later date. I, as for, for, for the, for the policy, and I have some ideas I'd like to pitch for earmarks. But there are, as far as a policy in general, I mean, there's a lot of things that are, are good and some things you're not going to agree with and we're not going to agree with on everything. But one of the things I'd like, I think, to avoid something like this in the future is that maybe we can have one-on-one discussions in advance and then kind of have a discussion. I know some agencies have subcommittees for policies and legislative matters that is selected by the council and then they make suggestions. Some language in these line items is broad. Some of it is not so clear as far as where it goes. So moving forward, I think that's what I'd like to see in the future is that we can have actually advanced discussion on this, however that form may be. But as far as moving the item, as far as the, the earmark and funding sources from the legislators, I, I don't mind having that discussion tonight.
Okay. Anything to add, sir?
No, unless you want me to move forward with some of the items, I'd like to, can I just go ahead and?
Absolutely.
So I, I'd like to really make a pitch for, as far as infrastructure is concerned. There's a couple of things. Woodcrest Elementary has, every time it rains, it floods on-site and around it. And I know this is a situation that's been going on for a while. I was alerted to it back in 2019. We had the pandemic and all kinds of other issues. So there wasn't really any funding sources. I'd like to take a look at that and see if this is something that we can advocate and bring some infrastructure funding. We could even collaborate with a school on this one as a joint agency. I was talking to the superintendent today and he also said Acacia School has flooding as well in, in, in the areas around it. Parks has flooding. So maybe we can take a look at some of these funding. We have, we have two representative, congressional representatives, one for the north side and one for the south side. So maybe we can, you know, double dip there.
Are you asking for, just so I have clarification, sir, that we partner with the school district or with the schools? The school district, I'm assuming.
This would be with the school district, I think, yeah. But, but Woodcrest Elementary, I mean, I've seen it firsthand. I've seen the kids crossing the crosswalk when it's raining and their feet get, they're getting to school and their feet are wet. And on-site, their, their lunch area, it's all flooded and so they're having their lunch and their, their feet are wet. So I don't think that's very healthy and so I really would love to see if we can visit that.
Sir, I'm, I'm happy to, if it's, if it's aligned with your suggestion, which I agree with, sign some sort of letter of support to the school district advocating for that, if you think that's a good idea, sir.
Right. So, so we, we explored this particular thing back in 2019 and, and there's a, there's a drainage issue that's happening there. So that's why the school is flooding, but it's, it's a joint property. So we've got some of it in, in school property, but some of it is also city property. So, and these are, these are all flow together. So, but we can't, we can't fix our part alone. We'd have to have their cooperation, obviously. But ultimately, I don't care how the cooperation happens, but we can't keep having kids walk, you know, with their feet wet when it's raining. And looks like we may be getting, you know, rain again in the future and our climate is changing. So, so that's one, one item I'd like to look at specifically. Another one is our active transportation plan. There's a lot of good things in there and I, I really would like us to take a look at some of that, some of those items there and see what federal funding could be brought to, to improve walkability specifically and, and safety. And then the, the third thing is Independence Park. Independence Park is, needs a lot of work. And I don't know, I know we've moved forward a little bit with design and other things, but I don't know what the status is, if we have first monies. Because I know these federal dollars are, are limited and I don't think they like to put in first monies. But maybe we can look at some funding towards, towards that. And then finally, the community center building on Ed Richmond Park, the one that's occupied by the Center for Healthy Neighborhoods. That building needs major upgrades and maybe that could be something to look at as well and see, see if there's any funding there. So those are my items that I'd like to pitch to see if, if this council would approve.
All right, sir. Anything further from any other council members?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles.
Thank you. Since I couldn't even get a second for my motion and get it voted on, or evidently was just voted down four to one without talking about it, I guess that means we have the meetings now and here. So I'm going to ask all of my questions that have come up and anything else that I think about as I go along. And we're going to talk about it because evidently this is my only chance to talk about it and I am not willing to wait until next year to have any of these conversations and just work on this now.
Understood. Councilmember.
So I will now go through this document.
Councilmember Charles, if I may, sorry, I'm happy to second your motion on the policy part. If we can have maybe the discussion on the funding aspects today, would that work?
The motion was on whether or not we will have this discussion when I have actually been had time to read through, absorb the document and talk to staff in private. But since I can't talk to staff in private, I will be talking to them in public. But if we move this to March 7th, I will have time to do this with staff behind the scenes. But if I cannot get that, I will have to do it here before voting on it.
This is kind of an ongoing item that doesn't, I mean, look, there's a position, some things that we vote on generally today, things that get updated over time. I mean, this is a document that's revisited numerous times over the course of a, you know, of a legislative year. So I don't, I don't, I mean, there's no.
I'll second your motion, councilmember.
And, and the response I made, this is about general guidelines and we're getting way down into the weeds on a lot of details at this point. And I'm not sure that really is the purpose of, of the platform. Platform is to provide general direction.
You know, I'll, I'll, excuse me, if I may, I'll make a motion to approve this platform, adopt it, authorize the, the position letters and provide guidance to city staff advocating the process.
Just a point of correction, I did hear Councilwoman Zara second my motion.
Yeah, I'll second your motion.
Very well, then I'll make a, I'll make a substitute motion of that to approve this and, and move forward.
And would that include a support position on item 13 as opposed to?
I'm not understanding why that means that you have the right to shut down all my questioning. If we're going to vote on this, I have the right to understand it first and to question staff about substantive issues in this document.
I haven't had a second yet, so I suppose.
No, you did. You had a second.
You did. You had a second. All right. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
No, I, I don't, again, I would like to talk to the city lawyer.
Call the question, please.
I am asking, as a council member, to discuss substantive issues in what is being voted on. And I believe I have the right to talk to city staff about those substantive issues and get my questions answered.
You have that right, but procedurally, the council has made a motion. They've called the question. So you can ask, make a motion to override the call of the question and allow your questions to be asked.
Then I make a motion, a supplemental motion to override the mayor's motion to immediately vote and be able to ask.
Well, no, the motion you'd be making would be to, to address the question of the call by Mr. Dunlap.
Okay, I, I'm not understanding why I'm not allowed. He called on me to ask my questions. I said I was going to ask my questions and then I got shut down.
Okay. First off, with, with respect, what's on the floor right now is Mr. Jung's motion with respect to adopting the proposals this evening. As part of that discussion, Mr. Dunlap made a call for, for the question, which would cut off debate. Having said that, you have the right to override Mr. Dunlap's call of the question, or the chair that could do that as well, and recognize you and allow you to ask your questions. If the mayor does not recognize you, you can bring that motion to override the call and therefore be able to allow your questions to be asked. I know it sounds complicated, but it's, it's a procedural question.
I bring the motion to override the call to allow my questions to be asked.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for that item.
This is on the procedural questions. Sorry, I gotta find my other sheet.
The motion on the floor is to override the request, the cutoff debate and to call the question.
Councilmember Charles?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap?
No.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Whitaker?
No.
And Mayor Jung?
No.
So that fails two to three.
Now the question's been called, we'd take a vote on the motion by Mr. Jung.
Could there be clarification on what that motion is, please?
To adopt the platform. It's right in front of you.
With the.
With the exception of supporting, supporting that, yeah. Thank you.
So was it 13 or 14?
13.
13? Okay. Okay, Councilmember Charles?
Abstain.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Abstain.
Mayor Portem Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes three with two abstentions.
And now we have a consent calendar item that was pulled by Councilmember Zara, item number five.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, before we go to the next item, just, I don't know if any other council members have any ideas or what the procedure is for these earmark proposals. Do we have to agree on them as a council or are we just giving direction and how, how would that work?
I think you gave direction, sir, in terms of what you were looking for.
Okay.
And I will seek input from any other council member as, as that occasion comes along.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there someone to present this item if?
We don't actually have a formal presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very well. Councilman Zara?
Yeah, so I pulled this item because the, the amount was large enough. It was a $250,000 line item, a budgeted item. Let me just see here. And the staff report is just one page. So it's way too large for just one page. And I'd like to see, to know exactly what this would be spent on. I, I understand it's hiring a third-party staffing service.
There's actually no net fiscal impact with this agenda item. The Administrative Services Department has experienced a high volume of turnover in some administrative positions starting during COVID and carrying through to today. So we are covering the cost of temporary staffing with vacancies.
So that I understand, but my question is, what would the $250,000 be spent on?
It would be for staffing for our utility services. Sorry.
Well, and it's not, it's not to exceed.
It's a not to exceed. It's not a.
So it wouldn't be a full 250. It'd be, it's to hire temporary staffing, not to exceed 250 without coming back to council.
Are we hiring, so this is, this is to hire people directly or are we temp, temp positions?
Temporary staffing.
Or are we hiring an agency and we're, we're, we're going through them to give us temp?
We're essentially hiring an agency to provide temporary staffing services when we have vacant positions.
Okay. That, that clarifies it a little bit more. And then how, what does the breakdown, is there a contract that is signed with the, with this a particular vendor?
We did include, enter, enter an agreement with Roth Staffing, but now that it's getting close to that $100,000 mark, we decided we'd be prudent to bring it in front of city council because we will likely exceed that $100,000 mark probably by the end of this fiscal year. And we do have some existing vacancies in the department, so this would get us through to 23, 24. And hopefully by then, all the positions would be filled and we'll no longer need to rely as heavily on the temporary staffing agency.
Right. What was their contract? How much does Roth get paid?
It's an hourly rate depending on the type of position that we're looking to fill.
Right. Do they get a percentage of the, of the salaries that we're paying or how does it work?
It's a, it's like a consultant. So you engage the, the company at a flat hourly rate depending on the type of position that you're looking to provide, provide temporary assistance for. And then they essentially are sending their employees to us to fill those positions temporarily.
So it's billable hours, but do they take a cut from their, the, the people they send us as well?
That would be my estimation because if you're, if you've ever, if you've ever worked for a temp company, they pay you a certain hourly rate and then they make the delta off of the business that they're contracted with.
Is there a reason why we, we aren't, we can't hire directly?
We are able to hire directly and we have done that in the past if the particular temp, the temporary staffing position works well for the city and we're able to do a full recruitment. And if they pass that testing process, then we have been able to hire. There is a period of time with Roth that you have to have, we can't hire them before they've worked in a temporary capacity for a minimum number of hours, usually about 720 hours, before that, before we can reach out to that temp to see if they'd be interested in applying for a city position at some point in the future.
I see. So, so in, in short, we have to do this because we don't have the capacity to hire directly? Is that what I am understanding?
Yeah, I think to answer your question, Councilwoman Zara, we use this to fill in, to fill in positions while we're trying to do permanent hiring. So this isn't to replace permanent hiring, but it's when we have vacancies and we need to do temporary for short periods of time. Sometimes, I guess sometimes there's been some long periods, but.
So I, I understand that. My, my question is, why can't we hire the, these temporary positions directly without having to pay an agency? Is it because we don't have the staffing capacity to be able to do that? Is it, is it a timing issue where they provide us fast, fill these positions faster than what we can do?
I, I think yes to both of those. That HR is working. That, that HR is working to fill permanent positions and so they have limited capacity to be able to work on temporary positions. And then I think also they already have people in their system that can, can fill these positions.
Okay.
That, that satisfies me. Thank you.
I, I also had a question on this, Mr.
Of course, sir. Please.
Yeah, I have no argument with using temps where necessary, but it was fairly vague in the, in the agenda item. It says critical vacancies and just exactly how many vacancies are we talking about on this?
At the peak, we had a 25% vacancy rate in Administrative Services. So we were down significantly in our CSR ranks in Utility Services. Business registration was also down one to two positions and then also up in Fiscal Services, we were down about three or four positions.
So total of up to five, is that what you're saying?
No, I think it was closer to a total of about 10 to 15, depending on the time.
Yeah, I mean, that would be interesting information, more specific to allow me to understand what's happening in terms of, but when it's just vague critical vacancies. Yeah, I did want to ask that question, so I thank you for pulling the item.
And maybe let them know how long we've been working with the firm.
Yeah, we've, I think we started working with Roth back in 2021 and we've continued to be happy with the temporary staff that they've sent us. We've had gone through a number of temporary staff because as they go on to find other positions at other businesses or other agencies, they rotate out as well. And we have been able to hire one or two of them.
So the total FTEs in this area right now is what?
In, in Fiscal Services, we are, I think, about 30 FTE total. Let me see. I think we were down about seven people at one time. I don't have that.
And I realize that changes over time, but I'm just wanting to get a feel of that.
Does change over time, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Anything further from any council members? Okay. If that, that is, I'd seek a motion.
Comment on the item?
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, if I can seek a motion to move this item, we'll go forward.
So moved?
All right. Is there a second? Madam City Clerk?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Proton, was that your second?
It was. The microphone was off at first.
My head was down. You're back on those. Councilmember Charles?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 7th. I will adjourn this meeting on behalf of our city council in the memory of Mr. Michael Nunez. I will ask for a moment of silence as well. Grieving the loss of a public employee is a difficult process for coworkers. That said, I cannot imagine the heartache that Mr. Nunez's family and friends are dealing with. He was a dedicated employee of our city for over 20 years as a valued member of our public work staff and our water operations staff in particular. He is survived by his daughter and his mother, Darcy. Death is a natural part of life, they say. We are tasked with practicing understanding when those we know or know of pass untimely. But we should be mindful that there is a man behind this job and a family who mourns his passing. So in honor of Mr. Nunez, we adjourn this meeting and I ask everyone for a moment of silence. Good evening, folks.